Roll. Called order the Hockman zoning board of review meeting if we can stand for a moment of meditation and stick to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the Republic which stands unafraid.
Seven o'clock, right? Right on the dot. That's Ronnie's pacemaker. Actually, a little late today. Okay, slacken. All right, so, island people. Tonight, we have petition one is determine weakness of an application and consider waivers. It's for a special use permit to allow for the installation of ground mounted solar panels. Petition is filed by Scott Ledoux. Mailing address of 451 Grafton Street, Worcester, Massachusetts 01604. For pop property owned by Sergio and Rebecca Bueno located at 178 Spunk Hill Road, Hockman, Rhode Island 02832. Identified as assessors plat 21 lot 3F. It's in an RFR 80 zone and filed in accordance with section 8C and 10 of chapter 134 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hockman has amended. So, this is a continuation of our, like, got it right, the May 18th meeting, which was pre-app. We got through some of it, but then we hit a bunch of roadblocks in the beginning. So, our minutes and my, my notes reflect that checklist item A and B were still incomplete. We did get through C and D and waived. E was deemed complete, F was waived, G was complete, and H was waived. So, we need to get through A and B. So, A was our, copies of our site plan. And the smag was they had a bunch of sketches. And aerials from a drone. We didn't have an actual site plan stamped by the engineer. And then checklist item B, they needed to add lot 3E to the, to the abboters notification and, and so. We have the applicant here. You've provided us with some more documentation. I don't know, I don't see an engineer stamp on any of this or. Okay. Okay. Who was, who was the surveyor? Do you mind me asking?
Yeah, it just, this looks similar to what you provided. It looks like you slid the panels more towards the center of the lot to get the modality off. Be interesting to see a survey. As far as some of the detail you can have, as far as the, again, like Jonathan said, the certification by an engineer or surveyor. This is still kind of more of a sketch than a, than any kind of survey. Yeah, yep. That's what we do. That's what we do. That's what, that's what the application requires.
Yeah, last year, back in May, we thought we made that pretty clear. We have to have a stamp survey. Because, I mean, we have to have it verified from an engineer that all of those lines and everything is in position. Having a sketch like this, I mean, not, not that you're playing any games, and I, and I know that the engineer made it, but, I mean, I can go home and make it. And it doesn't mean that it's right. Not, probably not. No, but, yeah, so, you know, with that, with that certi, with that stamp, then we know that all of these, these dimensions are where they should be. But, yes. Yeah, yeah. See if, see if you have that, because, I mean, then may, then maybe we can work through the subject two receipt.
Yeah, contingent on having it next month.
Yeah, because then we could.
If they're that close.
And I don't, I mean, I, I believe what you, um. If we don't have that, we might be premature.
Was that the only two items?
Yeah, to get through the checklist was, but it's all of A because we don't have all of these items on.
Oh, okay.
Because we, I'm, they're not giving us a real site, like a full site.
If they're sure they're gonna have it, we could still do a pre-app and go right into a, Eric.
Yeah.
Next month. They don't have.
Contingent upon those things.
Yeah.
So, well, we'd have to get through that item first.
It's actually a couple, three months ago when this application was first submitted, Ronnie, they had the original septic plan that was done, and they, they added plus this.
Sure. You may approach the bench.
This is, this is from, um, this is what we got from them as the site says.
But it's not stamped yet.
And then around to Danny.
Yeah, what?
Can you guys see it okay? Or if they email it to me, I can show it to you on my laptop. That's better.
That's maybe put it on the big screen.
Back to Hammontown.
I can't, no. I don't know that much.
It makes two of us. It's just not stamped.
Okay, so it's done by the Foster Survey Company, Eric Corbett, and he's got a data accumulation survey. But it looks to me like he doesn't have the proper lines on the former plan yet, but it, but it's done by a surveyor, so I think once you get it to that point.
That name's familiar. He used to work for Ocean State, Richard Azir years ago. Okay.
At the Foster Center.
Yeah, do, do you mind emailing that to Katrina or?
Yeah, let me.
And see if she can throw it up so Chip and I can.
I'm sorry, guys.
Enjoy, enjoy the meeting. No, no, that, I'm.
It doesn't have a problem, but it does definitely something put together there.
Oh, I, I use it. You can go through that far faster than I can. I mean, this has the, this page seven has a lot of information with the set, well, with the, all, with the setbacks of the panels from the property line.
It looks like they tried to get the hundred feet off of everything.
If, yeah, if this holds true and the survey reflects this later, then it should be on.
I thought we decided they didn't have the change exercise. I thought they were within the twenty five.
I think they wore chip. I don't see, they must have taken them out themselves.
Well, we had this, that got kicked around and then, if, if my memory serves. Well, it, it makes it easier because then we're not asking for anything special, because now, now you've, now you follow the ordinance as it's written. You don't, you don't. That, that makes it cleaner for all of us, so. Which is, that, that's great the way you have it if, like, so we just, we need to have that. Um, so I'm just.
It looks like that, that plan they have on the, on the computer there is certainly a draft. It does not even have the property lines on it. It's stamped. Really what's important is where the property lines are relative to the house and therefore, you know, relative to the panels that if you've got the hundred feet, you'll have that.
So, all right, let's just, let's bypass, um, item A for a minute while we're trying to get that. And then, did, did you update your abboters list at all? I cannot see that in here.
Yes, it is updated. I have some copies, the.
Yeah, that's what we sent back.
Little tags.
All right, so you already sent those, so you have the.
Yes, I did send them out.
Did you get them all back?
No.
Did you get any receipts where they didn't pick them up? The ones that didn't come back?
The ones that I didn't pick them up? I didn't. We got the ones that were signed. We sent out all the ones we originally had, and then the one that you guys hadn't had, did send those out.
You did add.
And I do have the receipt for those.
Yeah, so, so we need tho, those or Katrina will need them. And then, if they don't pick them off, you're, you're gonna get a receipt from the post, or we need those to show that.
I got the receipt from the post office.
Not.
No.
But, yeah, there's another receipt if they don't pick them up that you need to show that they just didn't get them mailed.
I would bring your receipt if you have any to take these.
I have it.
Yeah, just next time I would bring that just in case.
Yeah, so, yeah, so provide that.
Also, it's kind of a practical matter, so long as you have some evidence of it sent out, because you can't control if people pick it up or what they.
Right. And that, I think that's where. The receipt he has that he sent him is good enough?
If it comes down to the end and there's a few missing, so long as you have evidence that it went out. Because, again, there's, you can't control the postal service. You can't control the recipients. You can't control, you're only, as an applicant, the only basis that you rely. The only basis that you're required to rely on is the current identification of property owners in the assessor's database. So, you know, that doesn't get updated, you know, immediately on a property transfer, so you can go on the information.
So, you're looking for intent.
I think that's fair, yes. So long as you've made the act, that you've gone ahead and got notice.
Is it 395? No, I don't know. How much do they charge you for each one of those? You know? Oh, that's okay. I was just curious.
I have a million.
Yeah. This, I don't, I mean. We're not really at a point where we can move forward. And I, I mean, we can, we can look at that, but I don't know if there's enough info for us to even knock off some of that checklist.
Hey, you can knock off a lot of the child. I think the question is how far out is your surveyor actually having a plan that will be stamped, you know? Yeah, yeah. The next few weeks, I think, are a real.
Yeah. Wherever you are.
Yeah.
Not that that really gets us much further.
No, but can we knock off any of the checklist?
That's what I'm wondering. If we just go through it, if we got enough information, we can hang our hat on. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm stalling till, uh, they get back on stage with that map, and then maybe we can pick some of that off.
No.
Yeah, if we can agree that some of that item A is good enough.
It just gets them closer. Might be able to hit it all other than the stand. You know, the actual, that's fine, too. And then we can schedule it and.
I, I don't think the plan depicts the property period.
Would, would you, so.
This one's not, yeah, this one's more of a sketch. If that one is a survey, it's a compilation, the data accumulation survey, but definitely it doesn't look like it has any geometry at all on there, any line work. Where's the house? Left to right, front to back. Obviously, front to back would find the side to side.
And, and that's the only thing he sent you was that one print?
Any chance I can walk there, Katrina, or?
Didn't come through yet. Did it send on your end already? Outbox or anything?
It says it was.
It was block?
Yeah.
Let me have you just send it to my other email.
The gerbils and the Hockman Wi-Fi aren't running right now.
Lot of crank stuff back there.
Yeah, pray right now.
Yeah, we're all lagging a little bit. Yeah. Is that Cardi?
No, it's.
Oh.
So, I got a grant from the epic.
All right, I'll give you a different.
To, to applications.
Oh.
Everywhere.
Okay.
So, I've got them. Or landings.
Oh.
And they, we got noticed. They're gonna come, coming in, they're serving. They're doing this Westerly, that's been going on for a year. Rock Island, Smithfield, uh, any airport, you know, any, uh, airport in the state they're doing.
Any stadium.
So, it's every single parcel surrounding, every single parcel that has roads on it that would be potentially.
Is aerials been searched for?
Yeah.
Yeah, right restriction.
But, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
That tied up all of our answers.
It's tied up a lot of people.
Hold up, so hopefully it works. Yep, got it.
Not a lot of new surveys hitting the market either is the problem. There is one new one. Hey, how far along is that house? Done. They found it at the CO.
I put it over here between Dan and Chip.
There's a lot on it. There's no, no boundary. We go down the checklist, and like you said, Ronnie said this, get the ones we got, we got that by the end of the month, and it shows.
Get them a little closer.
All right.
The bottom line is a lot is 200 by something, right? It's 225 by 355, so, and then get those lines to just position the. We don't want to run that.
Yeah, sure. You're the youngest of us. You're the only whippersnapper that knows how to run them.
What do you like?
From 52, I'm too old.
Oh, then you're way older than me.
I'm still on my Commodore Vic 20.
On my slide rule.
Yeah, right. Your abacus. That touchscreen don't work, so.
No. Nothing.
He's, he's making like shadow puppets, but it's not working. You can do anything you want, Katrina.
Yeah, like a marketing dog, and I mean, this is great, but.
Yeah.
Whoa. Yep.
Ah, there you go.
Is that better, or it's kind of blurry that way? I mean, is that better?
Well, but I think between this, I don't know if that matters, but we can, but we see there's a well, we see septic. I think we can check those things off, right?
Let me tell.
Yeah, pretty sure they're on the lot.
Yeah, so you can play with it.
Ready shadow puppet?
Yeah, I'm good. Go ahead.
Oh, so, three copies of a site plan prepared by and signed and stamped by a professional engineer, professional, or professional land survey of scale of no less than one inch equals forty feet clearly showing. So, is the name and address of the property?
Uh, yeah. Address is here. And, uh.
Definitely.
Name is here, yeah.
Yeah.
Name and address, yeah.
All right, so, so, we'll say that one's there.
Uh, just to, just to note, you said it had to be one inch equals forty feet. What we've been given here is one to fifty. Shouldn't say over, I don't know, but.
Well, Dan, are they usually in the bottom?
It's in the title block, probably there. Could be a bar on the bottom.
Yeah, I can't make it out.
Where? Might have to shrink it to get it clear.
Yeah, does that work for you?
Actually, probably 104 or 36. It's gotta be, I'd say one inch equals forty.
Oh, wow. That could be, I have, I can't read that, yeah. I, I, it's a picture related issue, yeah, the. Yeah.
Well, you really don't have to get too concerned with that because they don't have that particular item anyway. So.
I, I don't think in the case of what we're doing, it's more the setbacks. I mean, if, if it's off, right? If, if it's forty to fifty, I don't think it's gonna matter because the specific.
The dimension overrider.
Critical, yes, that's, that's the rhythm. So, does it have the date?
Well, the date's gonna be on the real print, so.
With the stamp, probably, right?
I, I think it can. That's right.
There's a date here.
Yeah, he's got it on, so, all right, so, date, date looks good. North Arrow, that should be in the top, uh, that's in the graphic scale is on there, so the, um, lot dimensions and area. Um, on the sketch provided this evening, we have it. On this site plan, not yet, not yet. So, we, so that we can make that subject to, so we, we gotta clear that up next meeting. Platten lot.
Yes.
I saw that over there. Zoning districts. Tower of eighty, right? It's gonna be unfortunate. It's gonna be.
Where's small type there, huh?
Just get the setbacks over in the left corner of just a hundred feet with anything for things, so, so, if they can just add the zoning onto that plan, can they, can they submit that? If it's RFR, you know what the zone is and what the setbacks are, you just restructure, and you've got the setbacks for solar panels. They probably haven't on the plan anywhere, but it's something to easily add for you. I'll set time.
Yeah, it's.
He's got, he's got up here setbacks, hundred feet for that's for the solar panel. I don't know what zone is, but I'm sure it's an RFR eighty. In fact, it was probably on the application sheet.
Oh, it's definitely on. I saw it.
Yeah, what else would it be up there?
Yep.
Well, I'll just, we'll make a note that we just double, double.
It's gonna be, they're gonna put this stuff down anyway, so.
Double check it. So zoning districts and setback, we, we need to verify that.
Yeah.
Existing and proposed structures, those are on.
Yeah.
Um, their relationship and distance from the lot boundary line.
Will be gonna have the boundary on there.
Yeah. Right, so the sketch has all.
Speaking of which, there's a chicken hotel on the.
We call them condos. A bee, oh.
I was wondering what that, that was. That's a Bee Hives?
Happier.
Yeah.
What?
Thank you, very much.
Okay, so, um, so that one, we'll just, we'll get, we'll just double verify that that stuff's on, on the, um, existing and proposed parking areas, walkways.
Driving on there, John?
No, I don't. So, we think that's all that relevant. Oh, on, yes, it is. I'm sorry, on that one it is.
What was that? I missed that.
The, the driveway.
Oh, driveway.
Um, parking areas. So, those are on there, so that one's good. Existing and proposed landscaping as it relates to the rest.
I remember the landscaping being on the last plan that we saw, don't you? It showed shrubbery.
I wish I, I'm sorry, I just want Monty to.
Well, we have it. We have the plans they brought the last.
Originals?
I, I, I got.
Is that it?
I don't see it in here. I don't.
That was a. That was a septic plan.
Yeah.
Man, look at all the stuff added.
The original application here.
Well, that's what we need. You did. That's good.
These are all viewed.
That's all separate.
This one and then there's also a complaint here.
Okay, so this is.
I think the same stuff we already have.
That's the different one. This is the new one.
Okay.
I don't.
Yeah.
If it was on the.
Are you proposing any landscaping around the solar panels at all or? Any proposed? You are proposing screening, so probably what you want to do is just show that on the plan, just what you're proposing. Oh, it is on the plan, Ted? What is Showtech? I am, I'm kind of naive on this one.
Yeah.
That's a plant?
Like what, like a fencing or?
So the, so the solar panels, they're enclosed by a fence? Do we require that in our?
No.
No.
Why? So why are they doing that? I'm just curious. Yeah, it's more grid, more.
We ask, we ask for screening?
Well, normally screening, it's a visual buffer that would be like natural landscaping, not mesh. Fence, that's odd, man.
I don't.
Well, not, not that we have to, not, not that we have to have it, but typically that's what we do is because you want something that's natural landscaping, so it looks natural to the neighbors, not.
And you don't even have to really, you know, pose that. What we need to see is what is on the lot right now. Is it wooded? No, is it vegetated? Is it all lawn? Is it a big field? Because if it is all wooded and you're leaving woods along the water, a hundred feet away, that's screening. I mean, it's, you've just got to show us that's an existing conditions plan. What is out there right now? What are you proposing? Are you clear cutting two acres? Are you just clearing out a little area? No.
He he had his, you had your, um, drone shot somewhere. I thought you gave us a copy of that.
The drone?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, just to say wooded.
This is all the original.
Like Dan, I have the original.
I have.
Yeah.
I thought it was like the. It might have been that.
It might have been marked up there. Yeah, he had his drone memory so bad. Um, so, so like. Like Dan just said, you know, we need to have that on the site plan as well, because that's important to this project and to the neighbors that we know of the existing landscaping.
You don't have to oppose anything. Just if you just label it, you know, what's there, and then if it seems like it meets the muster with the board and with the neighbors. Why spend money on Abra Wadiz?
Yeah, if they got, if they got wooded fifty feet off the. And property. And if, you know, if we, if we get to the point where we can move forward with it and and potentially improve it. We, if need be, we could put conditions that you put some visual buffering, because like neighbor X might. Not want to look at it, so we might need some Abra Wadiz placed, you know, fifty feet away. Um, and we're not saying that yet. Right?
Yep. Yeah, because chances are the neighbor's house isn't on the property line too, so they probably got. They probably got a buffer on their own side.
Um, so, so have them add the existing landscape and trees and shrubs. I mean, not down to a. Black eyed Susie and a follow around, so you know, if if there's, if there's a mature landscape, have them do that.
Yeah, we need to know if they plan on cutting any trees. For the sun.
What, are you familiar with the site?
Okay. So that's.
Okay, so you guys aren't the owners, you have it from the solar company?
Yes.
For the solar company?
Okay, alls we're looking for is that we here, without going out to the site, kind of visualize what it does look like by a map. And therefore, when a neighbor, you know, pro or con, we can be able to, you know, make a ruling effectively.
It's. I can't read it. It's just so.
But would be helpful if we, when the surveyor gets the plan complete, if we could get a copy of that really prior to the meeting, that would probably be able to hear you, you know, for the. Hearing.
Oh, yeah, get you moving along.
It looks like. Recording the plans prior to, not the night of or.
Yes.
I know, I, trust me, I.
I think. So, so like Ron was saying, like, if you have them to a tree, I'm sorry if you, I'm repeating something. We need to know if it's getting dropped. We don't have one. So. Right? Well, because I mean, that could, I mean, it could be on the applicant's property line, but a neighbor might be very concerned with that because it's shading in the summer, blah, blah, blah. So we need to know that. Take, so. We need vegetation. Right? Needs to be stamped. This, this survey. Um. Lot, lot dimensions and and area need to be on that. Site plan, zoning districts and setbacks. I'll slow down. Distance of the solar arrays from the lot boundary lines. What you have on your sketch. There's gonna be a couple more. So, um. We're gonna clear these up. So existing streets, nine one one address, wells and septic.
Yep.
Yep, so that one's good. List of names and addresses, all property owners, two hundred foot of the subject property. Um, that we, you fixed already. Yeah, they gave us that. If you have that receipt that you sent it to that three E first, um, the, the green, yeah, you have that. Yeah, if you want to give us a copy of that, we put that one to bed.
Yeah, yeah, because that, yeah, go, go grab that, yeah.
Um.
There's no trees anywhere. This is where they're going.
So what I would do. Yeah, attach those to Katrina. And then, um.
We can't even see another house.
We can get a copy to put in, um. As exhibits when we have the hearing. So that way we can see a visual of what's going on.
Even if you could get right where the solar field is going to go and shoot the property, so we can see if.
I don't know, if you need a drone, just stand there and shoot. Just stand there and give us.
It's all lawn, just ground levels.
Yeah, just from ground level. You know, at the neighbor's house, see if you can even see the neighbor's house. That picture doesn't look like you can. It's probably.
Other one.
The next one, I don't know.
It, uh, they didn't know. Last night was skunk hell.
Is that a soul farm?
Yeah, but they didn't make a decision.
And and brush your brooks.
Brushing brooks are the one I would care about, because that would be ridiculous for us. There's nothing you can do about brushing it up. Because they already proved the master.
No.
Long time ago.
It's a.
No, you can't stop it.
No.
But there might be an alternative.
It's a, it's a blower.
All right, so.
Um, so.
Be bad in the morning.
The, the.
Yeah.
Supposed to be really bad in the morning. The last item on A is any peculiar site conditions or features. I, they, he has the topography and stuff on there. I mean, all the, all the bee hives and sheds and everything. I mean, all that other stuff is on. So that part of it.
We'll call that.
So. So just, so I'm gonna reiterate checklist items, so I don't need to point. I have kids, so I gotta. So on checklist item A, I am, the, um, so lot dimensions and area, you already have some of these written, zoning districts and setbacks. Um. The existing and proposed structures and relationship and distance from lot boundaries. So I, I, oh, the distances and, um, of the solar arrays from the lot.
You add them on your, your sketch right here. You just need them on your survey.
If he, if you, if he incorporates this sketch onto that survey, you've got most of what I'm asking. What the board is asking. Yeah, if he integrates the two and then he puts his big rubber stamp on it, good. Um.
Vegetation.
Yep, and then add, add the vegetation, which he does not have on. Did you find your receipt for that?
I haven't.
Is that?
Want it?
Does, um.
I'm just checking the card.
Yeah, because we want to make sure that that was that map, uh, the lot three E. I.
What's the address on that?
Yeah, that's what I.
I have a one ninety stone hill that isn't on the Rogers list they originally gave us.
Let me find the list and see if we can verify who that is. Uh, geez, I don't have, we don't have that person. It was map eighteen lot three E.
Yeah, on the computer.
Yeah, you can look it up on there.
By, uh, map parcel. Both that I do it for her.
Go to.
Now, come on this thing, give me a break. Move by parcel then.
Yeah, so we have all of them and then we have one extra, so I'm hoping that's the, that one. You guys can help.
Yeah.
I don't find it. I didn't see your web browser on here, so I didn't want to go.
It's okay.
Oh, here we go.
We're looking for the Hopington platform. Looking for a vision appraisal of the ownership. Or or Hopkins G I S.
G I S, yeah.
Getting close.
What's the, uh, do we have a parcel ID?
I just have a street address, one ninety Stone Hill Road.
Ooh, spam is calling me right now. Come here.
Be better.
William Fallon.
Phil Fallon?
Yeah. That's the map. B E, that's him. Okay, there you go. I'm faster than you.
I was getting there. I have everyone on.
You do, too? Okay, so that, so that is added. So, um. Can we entertain a motion on checklist item B? Special use permit application is completed with additional.
That was just, that's just the butters?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, um, three copies, a separate map. Um, within two hundred foot, so that's the. No complication. Everybody else was on the list.
Okay.
Um, we just, Dan, Dan Barudy, um, it was so close, right on the corner, he wanted to add that one out of caution. So, all right, so we get a second on that? Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, checklist item B is complete.
So I, checklist item A, we did not vote on, we didn't make a motion, we're just kicking that down to that.
Yeah, there's.
But they do have a bunch of the info, so if we get that print, she should be good to go.
Okay, yeah, there's about four outstanding items on that checklist. Um, so, so we can just hyper focus on that when you. Bring it. And if you, if you're not ready next month, just keep hunting it. And 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 I mean, I know you want to get moving forward, but there's no point in all of us coming out prematurely. We were hoping we'd have the site plan tonight so we could. Get to the next step in our adventure, but. Right?
How confident are you that you would have that planned by a month from now? So we could schedule the hearing and any.
Subject to receipt of checklist item A.
But.
Well, I think I have to schedule a stenographer.
Well, that's the pop, that's the gamble.
Yeah.
And they would have to let us know what a week ahead if the plan didn't come through.
Few days, few days ahead.
On the stenographer?
Yeah, I can cancel a few days ahead without them having to pay the fee.
Okay.
Well, I can do that.
That, that's their call.
Yeah, what, what's the date? Um.
Not until October.
So, yep, September twenty-one.
Do you understand what we were talking about? Once she schedules that, there's a fee involved. So if you're not ready, you don't cancel in enough time, you're on the hook for a fee.
So I'll call you probably the week before and see if you guys are out and if you want to.
We just, you know, don't want to keep punting you down to, I mean, October.
So if you have that, we're gonna finish up the app and then go directly to hearing that same night, if if we can get through that. If not, you're gonna get punted again.
Um, well, if they get the plan to us ahead of time, we can take a quick look and make sure they got what we need. If you, if you get the plan, there's no reason why it's not complete.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Um, yeah, you definitely can, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so if you get that complete, if you get that completed plan to establish everything on it, it's, it's an easy slide through and then we go to hearing and then you can see. What comes up once we really start questioning. I think, and then, um, so. At that rate, could I entertain a motion that we continue the pre-app? To, and potentially move into hearing, subject to receipt of checklist item A on September twenty-fourth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need a motion to? Go to hearing? That covers it? You're good?
Once we, once we get through the checklist and that's complete, then. It's your time. I think that's. So you're all set right now. If you have any questions on what we did, I think you have the right notes. Um. But it's, it's that, that stamped site plan that's, that's. Yeah, you're welcome.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, yep, we'll, we'll hope so. Take care.
The, I don't know, we did note the, uh, mother of town council, do you guys just want to pick up workshop?
Yeah, like that, everybody.
Yeah.
This, thank you, guys. Unless a pre-app comes on, this will be my only thing. Unless we get another pre-app, this will be the only thing. Apparently not. Are these the only minutes for you? Can you vote on them? Because I wasn't. This, um.
Well, there'd only be three of us.
So we was asking.
Be busy, Paul. Crazy.
And Chip.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of funny some of that.
Hey, do you care that there's three of us present for the minutes to vote a man?
It doesn't.
Doesn't matter. Okay. Uh, can I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July twentieth, twenty twenty-three? Last month, which was pretty much. This same special use pre-app, and then we had a workshop on, um. The ground mounted accessories or ring ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I think Ronnie abandoned us that night down the fire department, I think.
So.
Annual meeting, have to be there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved. Um. Guys, want to discuss anything else? Good? No.
Hi, guys.
Make a motion with a jury. Yes, just say second.
Very, very.
Second.
All in favor? So we have a motion and a second to adjourn any discussion? All in favor?